Seven oh one.
Oh, it is, seven oh one, you're right.
Thanks a lot.
I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrating position, please. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on TV, on Comcast Channel 99, and rebroadcast on WMGJ radio. The meeting of the guests in city council will now come to order. The city calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
President Williams is absent today, and our meeting is being chaired by President Protem, Councilwoman Cannon. Councilwoman Worthy?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we thank you for our help today. We thank you for the safety that you provided for us in this community through the storms in the recent days. And we pray for our brothers and sisters and family members and friends who are on the east coast, Lord, and the Carolinas who are fighting the floods now. We pray that you'll keep your hand in that situation, help those who are lost to be found. And God, we just pray that you would just release that water from the areas that are flooded, and God, that you will provide the relief that only you can. And we promise to give you the praise in that situation. Pray today for our council, that you'll give them wisdom and the decisions that they have to make. Continue to be with our mayor and his staff and his administration. Lord, just keep your hand on our city as we keep our focus on you, and we'll give your Son, Jesus, the praise. And it's in his name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on September the 11th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of the account for the week of September the 7th through the 13th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mayor. I'd like to ask Chris Cothron to come up, please. Whereas Cothron's Bakery has been honored to represent Gadsden as the sweetest bakery in Alabama. Cothron's Bakery entered a national contest sponsored by Don Foods Bakery supplier called the sweetest bakery in America. The voting ran from April until July of 2018, with the general public allowed to vote once per day through the internet and with paper ballots in the store. At this time, it is not known where Cothron's Bakery ranked nationally because only the top three names have been listed. But they are so proud to win Alabama. Being one of the top three winners, Cothron's Bakery will be awarded prize money and a plaque from Don Foods. The Cothron family started in baking business as a Shipley Doughnut franchise in 1962 on Forest Avenue. Whereas the business relocated to East Broad Street in the early 60s and in 1976 moved to its present location on George Wallace Drive. Whereas in 1993, the family took the business independent as Cothron's Bakery, as you know it was born. There are currently two locations, Gadsden and Boas, and therefore, I'd like to congratulate them on behalf of the mayor's office and the council members of the city of Gadsden to hereby congratulate Cothron's Bakery as the sweetest bakery in our hometown and the state of Alabama. City of champions.
As third-generation Cothron having the bakery, we are certainly thrilled by this award. It was somewhat unexpected. We were in the top five, but we were competing against a grocery store chain that we really did not think we would beat out. So we were thrilled with this, and we are more than thrilled to have the honor bringing it home to Gadsden, especially with new venue opening just down the street from us. We are just thoroughly excited. You know, we were the second business on that whole stretch way back in the 70s. Now, given I was maybe 10 at the time. But all that swampland now, and it's just a thriving area over there, and we are just thrilled that Gadsden is growing, and we're a part of it there in East Gadsden. Thank you, everyone.
Mayor, I'd also like to add that Chris, anytime that we need him to do Youth and Government Day for the last 12 years, he's always provided the doughnuts for Youth and Government Day. And we was talking, and also, when he was in high school, he was a youth in government up here on this stage. And I think he said he was the mayor, is that correct? So we appreciate everything you do over there for us. The mayor said he liked swampy today. That brings us down to unfinished business. We have none today. This is a time and place to advertise, to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of an ordinance for adopting the fiscal year budget, 2019 budget. We're going to ask Lisa Rossler to please come up and go over the budget for us at this time, please. Lisa.
Good morning. My name is Lisa Rossler. I'm the Finance and Revenue Director for the city of Gadsden, and I would like to present our 2019 general fund budget to the city this morning. This budget, I feel, is an excellent budget. We have been working on this for about two months, and it has been presented already to the mayor and, of course, to the city council. This budget is a total of $51,613,065, which is an increase of 2.3%, or $1,145,920 from last fiscal year. There again, as was just mentioned by Chris, we have the opening of the venue, which we're very excited about this next Tuesday. And with that, and also the soon opening of Longhorn Steakhouse, we're seeing things progress here in the city, and we do feel like our sales tax and other revenues will increase in this next fiscal year. So that's part of what that is projected on. This budget, as far as personnel, this budget gives across-the-board 2% cost-of-living raise for all full-time employees. As most of you do know, we do have a step plan, and this is not a step increase. This is a cost-of-living increase of 2%. That cost of living costs the city almost $580,000. Also, our retirement rate, we are with the retirement system of Alabama, our retirement rates did go up this year. For what reason, we do not know, but therefore, you know, they dictate to us what we pay, and they have dictated an increase to us this year. Tier one will go up from 18.27% to 19.19%. Tier two will go from 16.92% to 17.77%. And that increase in retirement costs the city 200, almost $206,000. Our insurance also went up this year. The board, we're under the local government board, our insurance is, and the board recommended actually 6%, and they passed a 5% increase in our premiums this year, and that is a substantial increase to the city of Gadsden. As you all are aware, we do have an ordinance that sets out that the city pays 80% of the premium for an employee, and the employee has to pay 20%. So when the premium goes up, the amount the employee has to pay therefore goes up. So if you have single coverage with the city of Gadsden, it will be going up $54 a year. If you have family coverage, it'll be going up $131,56 for the year. We did make sure that with the increase in pay, that all city, full-time city employees would be covered. They will get a raise, so if someone says, well, you increased my insurance so I didn't get a raise, that's just not true. Okay? We did make sure of that. One big item for us this year in personnel was the staffing of the venue that we just talked about. We have an excellent, beautiful new building and venue, and we have to, of course, staff it. So we have added, we already had one full-time and one non-full-time employee that will be going to the venue, but we have also added two more full-time jobs, an administrative supervisor and an administrative office assistant. There are three non-full-time positions, which are 29-hour-a-week positions, and one seasonal position that has been added to this budget. There again, these jobs will be posted internally and also advertised on the outside. So if you know of anyone that's looking for a job, we have some full-time as well as non-full-time positions that will be opening up at the venue. So in a nutshell, with the increase in the raises and retirement and with the increase in insurance, our personnel cost increased well over $1 million this year in this budget. So because of that, we have again seen our personnel cost go over the 70% mark of our total general fund budget. There are some capital equipment that is budgeted in our general fund budget of a little over $500,000, which is down from last year, because remember, last year, we bought two garbage trucks and a dump truck. So we had some big equipment. There are also some MPO projects that will occur in fiscal year 19. There are two big projects that I know that many people are excited about. They're both related to South 11th Street, and hopefully, those projects will occur this week. As you are well aware, with an MPO project, these are projects we like to do because it's 80/20 split, so the city only has to fund the project 20%. So this year, our MPO projects, the total budget is $785,583. That's the city portion of these projects. We again, in the general fund, fund for outside agencies. This year, our outside agencies are funded for a total of a little over $2.3 million. There are a couple of new agencies. We have again funded the Edwah County Health Department this year, and the two new ones are the Edwah Historical Society and the Mental Health America, which is at the Family Success Center, and both of these have been funded this year. Everything else is the same with outside agencies, other than the Gadsden Industrial Development Board has been moved out of this budget and moved to the new 1% sales tax. The other two big funds that occupy the city of Gadsden are capital improvement funds. There's Capital Improvement Fund One and Capital Improvement Fund Two. Capital Improvement Fund One is our old 1% sales tax, which was passed back in 2003. As you are well aware, this fund brings in a projected revenue of $7.1 million, and almost $5.3 million of that is used for debt. So this fund does not have a lot of leverage as how we can use it. We have this year in this fund budgeted a little over $1.1 million for equipment. As I explained to the council already, for the past 10 years, we basically have been doing capital leases where we borrow money from major equipment, but our lease is paying off in February, and we have decided this year, because of the new 1% sales tax money, we can kind of leverage things a little bit better. So we have decided to just outright buy equipment this year. And there again, like I said, it's a little over $1.1 million. Most of that equipment is for the police department and for our street services, Department 7300, which that is where our grass cutting takes place. The other fund is your Capital and Project Fund Two, which is the new 1% sales tax. The only debt that is in this fund is the new debt, which is the 2017 bond issue, which is what was taken out, $23.3 million for the venue, the falls, the expansion of the landfill, a number of projects that took place with that money. And that debt is almost $1.4 million. One thing that I would like to point out is the amount of money that is budgeted for street resurfacing in fiscal year 19. You have, if you go back to the old 1% sales tax, there's $600,000 there. There's $1 million that is in the new 1% sales tax. We have basically, I think it's, let me get my notes here. We have $375,000 that is budgeted in gas tax, and then there's $488,000 that has been budgeted in HUD funds. So therefore, we've got a total of almost $2.5 million that's set aside for street resurfacing this next year. So that is it in a nutshell. Is there any questions that I could answer for anyone?
Yes, I have one. I don't know if you answered on the engineer. What's the mileage for resurfacing a road, just roughly?
That would definitely be the engineer.
Well, yeah, and unfortunately, that varies extremely widely based on the road characteristics. Some stretches such as South 11th, you've got standard 12-foot lanes, curb and gutter. You've got certain levels of striping, traffic control, as in traffic light control with loops, et cetera, that tie in versus a normal residential street that sometimes get down to 18 feet or less. So honestly, I've not nailed it down to a per foot because of that. It varies widely. I've been asked this probably every time I do a resurfacing job. Good question. You're in good company that asks that same question. But really, just it varies so widely, we need to assess each street, and then we just break it down. Trying to nail it down is nearly impossible. We can get ballpark, but it changes, and then your oil prices go up, and it just throws it completely wide open. So to keep egg off my face as best as possible, just let me look at it.
So with this 2% across the board, does council and mayor get a raise also with this?
Yes, sir, that is correct. Any other questions?
I think, Mr., I'm sorry. Go ahead. Just want to say something else. Mr. Engineer Dutton, talking about our streets, I know we have a lot of streets that the base is not good on right now to continue with, keep up with our weights of our garbage truck now, so that would cost, that would do a lot of, have a lot to do with the prices there, wouldn't it? Also, the base.
Yes, sir. When we assess the roads, we look at base failures, we look at obviously the wearing surface. Some of our roads have concrete beneath them, some have just standard chert. Some of them don't have thick enough chert or aggregate base, whatever the case may be, but yes. I guess my long answer made a little bit shorter is that certainly increases it. When we see those deeper failures, it just is a bigger project. We have to open up the road quite a bit more than a standard resurfacing.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa, for going.
Thank you. Thanks for your support, and we'll be asking for passage of this next Tuesday.
Are there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Anyone wants to speak against this one? Does anyone want to speak in favor of the budget? Disordance has presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Mr. Coe, when your time comes at the end, you can talk about what you want to talk about. We usually don't take questions from the audience just as something, in case you wanted to speak about the budget. You know, you was four against the budget, opposed against it, or something like that. But at the end, when you speak, you can, she'll still be around here if you want to ask for something. Our next public hearing is a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property at 205 New York Avenue in District One, Ronald Edward Jenkins, Celestra Angela, and Diamond Rhodes being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is anyone opposed to this? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Builder and Apartment. We filed this case in December of 2017. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate this nuisance.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Be no further discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property at 1309 Vincent Avenue in District One, Clovia R. Johnson and Francis W. Lowery being the last known owners. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone here opposed? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we filed this case in February of this year. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate the nuisance.
Second.
Are there any discussion? No further discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property at 1010 Slusher Avenue in District Two, Ronnie Pollard, subject to a mortgage in favor of Financial Services Corporation of Alabama being the last known owners. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone opposed? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we've been working this case through several different owners. We filed the case in January of 2015. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate the nuisance.
Second.
Are there any discussion? Be no further discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien for demolition of property located at 1164 Bray Avenue in District Three, Edward Harvey and Juliana Billingsley, in care of Edward Harvey being the last known owners. The amount is $786.40. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone opposed? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any discussion? Be no discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement liens for demolition on property located at 1310 Edwah Avenue in District Three, God's First Ministry, Jeffrey Washington, and Whitechapel Missionary Baptist Church being the last known owners. The amount is $28,295.40. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone opposed? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? The only discussion I would have on this was a big building, a lot of brick, and that's why the amount was so much on this one. Anybody else have any discussion about this? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
We have nine public hearings today regarding assessing liens for grass cutting work that has already been performed. This is a time and place to advertise, to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution addressing nuisance abatement liens. The first is on property located at 205 New York Avenue in District One, Ronald Edward Jenkins, Celestra Angela, and Diamond Rhodes being the last known owners. The amount is $136. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in regards to this resolution? Anyone want to speak in this? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Are there any discussion?
You know, the only thing that I observed here is that this house is next door to the house that we are abated, 207, and this is next door to 205. I just wonder if someone living in that one.
Mr. Austin?
Actually, you'll notice that we had one before, the council this morning, item number 10.
Yes.
And we've already passed 207. We did that a couple of weeks ago. These are two houses next door to each other.
Yeah, okay.
We've had to cut both lots, and now, when public works gets in the area as far as demolition, they'll type both houses.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Be no further discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is for property at 207 New York Avenue in District One, FNA NPLLC is the last known owners, and the amount is $136. Is anyone present wishing to speak about this location? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move to abate.
Second.
Any discussion? Since no discussion, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is for property at 712 Knuckle Street in District Two, Christie Butler Reed is the last known owner, and the amount is $316. Is anyone present wish to speak about this location? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Be no discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is for property at 2214 Norris Avenue in District Six, Gary Alexander is the last known owner, and the amount is $136. Is anyone here would like to speak about this location? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution then.
Second.
Have any discussion? No further discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is for property at 2313 Norris Avenue in District Six, Patricia J. and Michael Dial, care of Patricia Dial, are the last known owners, and the amount is $196. Anyone present that would like to speak about this location? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any discussion? No further discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is for property at 504 Pearl Street in District Six, State of Alabama, and Justin Shane Jenkins are the last known owners, and the amount is $256. Is anyone here present wish to speak about this location? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is for property at 309 Knocklode Drive in District Seven, John Thomas Riles is the last known owner, and the amount is $196. Is anyone present here that wants to speak about this location? Is anyone present here that wants to speak about this location? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on this? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is for property at 2305 Knocklitt Road in District Seven. Agatha M. Hames care of Judy Hames, and Agatha Hames care of Erica Skidmore, the last known owners, and the amount is $256. Is anyone present here to wish to speak about this location? Uh huh.
Council President, it's been brought to my attention that this property might have been recently sold, and I just wanted to kind of, I know that there was another issue that two councilmen had brought up to me about another piece of property, and I want to kind of address how we handle this. When we assess the lien, we check the tax records. That's what the law requires us do. And so we, so at the time that it comes through my office, we check the tax records to see who the owner is. Now, when this property, when property is sold during the interim, of course, you have the new owner who has no notice that we're going to put a lien on the property. However, at closing, the attorney should have, most attorneys have at closing, is a lien affidavit, and that is signed by the seller, who says that they have, that they have personal knowledge that there's been no work done on their property for which a lien could arise. So in a situation like this, if we do impose a lien on the property, the current property owner can go back to the closing attorney and through that affidavit the seller filed, go after recovery of that money. Now, you know, whether that's going to happen for $136 or $200, I can't tell you.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. We appreciate that. I guess all that in a nutshell to me was that they would have to seek legal action against the attorney that drew it up to see if they could get their money back. Is that correct?
No, to the prior owner, the lawyer would go back.
Go back to him, okay.
My question on a lot of this, and my three right here, is the date due, I mean, the date that this form is not on here. Do we have that?
The date of work was on?
Yeah. I don't know why it doesn't appear on there.
A lot of them are done a year ago.
This is 2017.
Yeah. I remember this piece of property, and I remember us cutting it, but then the owner at that time, the new owner demolished the property itself and cut the price. But anyway, it's just a mixed up deal.
You know, I worry about stuff like this for just the average guy that don't want to spend a couple of hundred dollars for an attorney. It's like getting a ticket for $30, and you hire an attorney for $500 to satisfy a $30 ticket. There just should be some kind of way that we could not charge $500, you know? It just seemed like it to me. I don't know legally. I know we don't have any remedy for that, do we, Mr. Attorney?
We don't, but I mean, that's the reason I wanted to bring it up, for that, you know, you make the point I was trying to make is, you know, lawyers like to make money, but, you know, this is for cutting grass a year ago, and from what I understand from, you know, that this property has been, there's a new owner on this property now. So it's y'all's decision.
Thank you. So basically, what happens, somebody buys this property, they don't know about this lien, so then when they get a notice that they owe us, then they'll come up here and say, "I don't know anything about it." When we pass this ordinance and this lien, so basically what you're saying, they need to find out before they buy the property that they have to pay a lien on the property.
Yeah, but the, well, yes, you're right, except for one point, is they would have no idea about the lien. Even like on this other situation, two councilmen spoke to me earlier today, the closing attorney had called and said, "Look, I searched the records, there's no evidence of this lien, and there won't be." And that happens. Like, for example, if I'm going to sell you my house, and I have a painter come and paint the house, and I don't pay him, well, I close on the sale with you, and then after we sell you the house, he comes back and within the timeframe, he files a lien. Well, you own the house, now you were responsible for the lien, but you had no idea about it.
So the lien is, this lien right here is only filed with the city, so when there's a title search, this is not going to show up?
This would not, this will show up now. Once you pass this and there's a lien, then it is filed recorded at the courthouse. But prior to today, there is no notice in a record search of this. And that's the reason attorneys at closing, because this is not new, attorneys at closing have the seller sign a seller affidavit saying that there are no unknown liens that are about to be filed.
Oh, okay, okay.
So in a nutshell, you're just saying, "Don't pass it."
I'm not voting.
Yeah, yeah, but that's what you're saying.
I'm not saying that.
It's up to you.
Well, I'm just going to request that we, that we hold a table, because I want to bring number 13 Comknock back up that was passed last week at the same time.
Okay, so these people are going to buy, are you saying that they're getting ready to purchase, someone is getting ready to purchase this property?
I'm saying they already bought it.
Oh, okay.
And then they got a lien that they didn't even know anything about.
Oh, okay.
The lawyers checked it out six months back, but I know what Lee's talking about. I want to table it 14 days, and let's look at that before we just step in and do it.
Let me, let me go back and say, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. And so what you want to say about it, then that way we'll get it right on the agenda.
If y'all want to work it. I want to go back and revisit this, what we've been talking about this morning, and also what we've been talking about.
Do we need a motion reconsider today?
13 Comknock.
Comknock.
A motion to revisit number 13 Comknock from last week.
I second it.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to reconsider last week's action, or whenever it was, on 13 Comknock?
Right.
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I don't understand.
Motion carries to reconsider.
It's similar to this.
Well, we're going to reconsider it, and then...
It was last week.
It was last week.
Yeah, well, I'll go with the affirmative.
You know, in this one here, on this one here, Councilman Reed, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution, so you just want 14 days on it?
I want to table it 14 days to go along with 13 Comknock. We'll bring it back up, then we can sweep it all at one time.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table this resolution regarding 2305 Knocklitt Road for 14 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 14 days.
I might have messed that up a little bit, but that's the best way I could figure how to do that, anyway. Our last public hearing is 2400 Knocklitt Road in District Seven. George Martin and Stanley French are the last known owners, the amount is $136. Is there anyone present wishing to speak about this location? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one's authorizing change order number one for B3362 for renovation to Kiwanis Pavilion in Knocklitt Falls Park. The amount is $21,612.12. Thereby adjusting a total contract with HUDAC Construction to $809,612.12. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one's a resolution authorizing agreement with Gaston Times, the renewal, this renewal of the annual buck agreement with classified line advertising. The rate is $1.85 per line. This is used as an own needed basis by the departments using budgeted funds. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any discussion? I want to say we do advertise with the Messenger also and the Gaston Times. Any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one's authorizing agreement with EE Group Incorporated. This is for design service to upgrade and improve the lighting along the boardwalk and parking lots north of the River Walk and Splash Pet Air on Albert Raines Boulevard, and the amount is $4,000. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
No move.
Second.
Are there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one's resolution authorizing agreement with Edwah County Board of Education. This allows the city to undercut the property adjacent to the parking lot of the Hokesbluff High School as a source of dirt to cover the city's inert landfill. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any discussion? This is basically where we've been getting our dirt for covering for our landfill. They don't charge us. We just go out there and get the dirt. All we need, we've been doing this for five or six years, so it's just a win for both of us. Any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
That brings us down to new business. Do we have any today?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one that's a request from the Engineering Department, and I ask for unanimous consent, and this is where they're going to reinstall the rooftop lightings along the buildings on Broad, downtown Broad Street, and so I ask for consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Are there any discussion?
The budgeting item for this is $9,500, and I believe DGI already have the lights. Basically, what the city was doing is installing the lights.
Any further discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have two. First one was requested by the City Clerk's Office. It's a resolution authorizing satisfacation of lien of 808 Roger Street. Asked for unanimous consent.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption, please.
Second. Are there any discussion? Be no further discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I have one more, it's a request by the Engineering Department. This is a resolution authorizing agreement with the EE Group Incorporated to perform design services required to repair and improve a portion of pedestrian lighting on Tuscaloosa Avenue. Asked for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Asked for adoption, please.
Second.
Are there any discussion?
Yes, this is for the lighting on Tuscaloosa Avenue. There's been a lot of talk about the lighting being out down there, so this is the, hopefully it will repair it. Yeah, and I'll just leave it at that.
Any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any further new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one from the Engineering Department. This construction authorization for us to make our sidewalks handicap accessible. I'd like for unanimous consent to hear that today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Are there any discussion?
Yes, this is a grant from the federal government. It's to make sidewalks in the city of Gaston handicap accessible. And I know in my district, there are a lot of handicapped people, and it makes it easier for those people to be on the sidewalk instead of in the street. And it's 80% for the federal government, and it's going to cost us, I believe, about $70,000. That's our matching portion of it. So I think it's a good deal for the city.
Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any more new business?
Mr. President, I have one. It's a resolution file 32, resolution authorizing agreements for 2018 CDBG grant recipients. Asked for unanimous consent.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, this is authorizing agreement with fiscal year 2018 Community Development Block Grant, and it lists, if you want me to run down those.
If you don't mind, please.
I will. This is going directly to Metropolitan Area New Nutrition Assistance, MANA, $20,000. Thirteenth Place, $12,000. Weather Cross Ministries, $12,000. Snail Grove Civitan Center, $3,500. Love Center, $7,000. Council on Aging of Edwah County, $2,000. Family Success Center, $10,000. James H. Berry Center for Children, $3,500. St. Martin, whatever that is. I can't pronounce it anyway. If Jeannie was here, she'd pronounce it for me. Catholic Center of Concern is $3,000. Downtown Gaston is $5,000. Gaston Commercial Development Authority, $5,000. Boys and Girls Club of Gaston, Edwah County, $3,000. Summary Enrichment Program of Edwah County, $3,000. That's all I have.
Any more discussion about this? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any more new business? That brings us down to department reports, committee boards. Do we have any? Shane?
On behalf of the mayor and the council, just want to formally invite any and all of you to the official open house and grand opening of the venue at Couso Landing, to be held one week from today. That's Tuesday, the 25th, at 5:00 PM. It'll last from 5:00 to 7:00, or 7:00-ish. We just want to extend the invitation to anyone that has not seen it, or anybody that wants to see it again. There'll be snacks and drinks and entertainment provided by the Gaston State Showband on the main stage, and there'll also be some, the Museum of Art and Cultural Arts are putting on some activities to keep the kiddos occupied while the adults have time to see the facility. Lots of thanks go out, so I'm not going to mention a whole lot of folks, but the Gaston City Titan ambassadors are going to help us with that event, so I want to thank them in advance, and please do share that invitation with family and friends. We hope to see at least 1,000 people there, so we're excited about that and look forward to seeing you then.
All right, thank you. And other departments? That brings us down to citizens' requests. We ask that you limit your request to five minutes, please. Joseph Coe, he's going to talk about pay increase for police and fire departments, and in certification of minority businesses. Joe, and you can ask that question about, you wanted to, about the budget now, if you wanted to.
Okay, because it may limit my five minutes, which I know you're holding to. The budget that she just read was a pay increase in the entry level for the police and the fire.
You want to talk about that?
Well, it was, ain't nobody say yes, so.
No.
Let me go on to the president pro temp, the council, to the mayor, to all in the chambers. In 2012, I came before this council, that's when I started, asking for an entry level increase for the police and fire department. And at that time, I was trying to recruit blacks for the police and fire departments, because people complained it was only a few blacks, and that it was because of racism and discrimination, but that's not true. There were causes, but discrimination and racism were not in it there. The main reason was the pay that the police and the firefighters are getting. The city of Oxford pays its police $22 an hour. The city of Anniston pays its police $19 an hour. Gaston pays theirs $13. Now, that's a disgrace and a shame. People who put their lives on the line each and every day, and the entry level rate is $13, and all you say, you support the people who protect and serve this city, but your support is only lip service. From 2012 until this day, that level hasn't increased, and you as council people cannot lay it at the feet of the mayor. Any four of you can hold up this budget until there is a pay increase for the police and fire department. Last year, you passed a one cent sale tax, which is going to generate millions of dollars. Why can't you take some of those funds to increase the level rate for the police? I just don't understand. Now, that 2% she gave, that's nice. Now, that 2% she gave, that's nice, but you got people riding around in their cars, and you say you give them the cars, cars can't feed anybody. They can't pay bills. $13. Anniston's paying 19. Oxford is paying 22. And we said we are the city of champions, but we are acting like we the city of chumps. I just ask you to please, before you pass this budget, make sure that you are taking care. We're losing police officers, people retiring, some people won't even work. They get the job, they leave. I saw a man, young man upstairs, I got, fill out an application to join the police force, but this is not going to cut it, and you all can do something about it, and that's what I'm asking you to do today. The other matter is the certification of black businesses, of minority businesses. I have some of you, I won't say some, this council and this mayor have been accused of not giving businesses to blacks, but it's not quite that simple. See, I like to get my facts. I spoke to a contractor who does business in the city of Gaston and other places, and he told me he doesn't have mind working with minorities. He asked me to give him the names and numbers of some black businesses in Gaston. I was embarrassed. I could not even give him a name. I met with Pro Tim, President Pro Tim, last week. He gave me the name of three black businesses. I spoke to Shane, he gave me the name. So I'm asking you, this city, to certify any black business that want to do business with the city of Gaston, have them to bring you their license, their insurance, whatever it takes, certify them. Then you can have a list, because the city of Gaston does not have a list, then you can certify all of these businesses. And when people come to submit a bid for a job, you can give them the list. Here are some black businesses that you can use for subcontract. It's not that difficult to do, and it will move all of this, talk about you not doing this or you're not doing that. Once you have got that information and you give them an opportunity to come, then there should not be an argument as far as what they can do as far as doing city business. So I hope you all take this in the spirit that I give it, but we got to do something about the police. You all cannot pass a budget. With these folks getting $13 an hour, Anniston getting 19, Oxford getting 22, something is wrong with that picture. And thank you very much. Ms. Toz, do you have a question or something?
I was going to, you answered the question about the certification and what can be done. But, Mr. President, is it all right that our city engineer speaks to the process of how they do as far as contracting is concerned, as it, well, as far as getting contractors and how you go about doing that?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. You can, that'd be good. If you don't mind, Mr. Engineer, please.
Absolutely. We start with a project, obviously, once we estimate the cost of that project or receive the cost from other professionals we're working with, whether it's architects, engineers, what have you. We take that number, and to comply with the competitive bid law, it determines how we advertise that project. So if you have a project over 50,000, it has one set of requirements. If it's over 500,000, you're getting into a different level, so it's got a different set of requirements. Then we've thereby complied with the competitive bid law, which is what we're, what we're going for. Outside of that, and in addition to that, personally, I myself, and I guess in lieu of our policy set in place by this administration, personally, I personally send also a notice to a DECA. I've got a contact with the Office of Minority Business Enterprises. So they certify anybody licensed to do business in the state of Alabama. They're licensed in Alabama, so I take it. I've not exhaustively researched. I'm assuming it's any business that can, meaning their headquarters could be anywhere as long as they're licensed in Alabama. But they are certified women or minority business owned. They go through a set of criteria that a DECA has in place. We don't have that list in my office, certainly to keep it up to date and accurate. So those businesses that have gone through that process with a DECA, to ensure that they are in fact minority or women, women business, businesses owned, they get a special notice to bid on any of our projects. So with the intent to get the right notice to the right people to get feedback. So that's essentially the process we take.
So you're asking the city to do what?
I'm asking the city to certify black businesses in the city of Gaston. This DECA, some of these people, these contractors, they're not running to get no list from DECA, and I don't, I don't expect them to. But we being the city, you can certify, now you don't run out and get them, you put it out, any minority business that want to do business with the city of Gaston, come in, they need license, insurance, whatever, and the city, you will certify them. So they'll be certified to work on these positions. So when you do have bid jobs, you can give out your list, here are the minority businesses in Gaston, they are certified to do the job. It's up to them if they want to accept them or not, but at least they will have it.
So they would still go through the same process as everybody else?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Not that's for any special, just certify them so they can do the work, but they're going to have to do what everybody do as far as bidding. Or if they don't, at least the contractors, if they want to use electrician or plumber, you have a list of people who's certified to do the job, and they can use, do it in that manner. Is that difficult, Mr. Engineer? Is that something you think y'all could do?
I follow policies I'm given. I'd be happy to follow the policies the council gives.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. That brings us down to remarks by the mayor and council. Mayor, would you like to go first?
Yeah, well, we have a $5 million, a high million dollar building going up now with the minority group over in East Gaston. You know, we do send to everybody that's signed up to do whatever, okay? So we're always looking for it. I want to talk a minute about the budget. You know, there's so many things that go into a budget that you don't realize is going to be there when you first start working on it. Ours is about 60 to 65 million dollars. Well, last year, our retirement rate went up, which is what we pay for the employees, which I'm glad we can pay it. And the insurance went up, which we pay 80%. I doubt that there's very many cities in the state that pay 80% of the insurance premium. I'm glad we can pay that. Well, this year, it went up again, and the state decides that, retirement system, and so does the state on the insurance. And when you get things passed along to cities like we do, and no money comes with it, it's not very good sometime to come up with a balanced budget. But, you know, we, we try to take good care of our employees. When I got here a few years ago, I think our benefits were about 80% of the budget, and we had about a million and a half in the bank, and owed about $7, $7 million a month, a year in payments. And if you go bankrupt, there is no retirement. City bankrupts, there's been some in South Alabama, there is no retirement for anybody. And so we try to keep all that in mind, but there's so many things that keep moving and moving and changing. Also, we, let me see here, another thing that's increased is equipment. You know, every so often, we have to buy big pieces of equipment, five, $600,000 piece of equipment, because it wears out. The landfill, when I got here, since I've been here, they said it would last a while. When I got here a few years ago, we're in our third landfill that we're paying for, and that's pretty expensive, too. You have to get all these tests done, you have to move the dirt, you have to put more dirt in. There's a lot of expense that goes to the landfill and environmental wise. And, you know, we've been able to go through all that. Also, curb cuts, it's not a lot to do those, but we're still doing them because it was under a court order when we got here for the handicap where they can cut it, go up on the sidewalk from the street. And we're still doing them. We passed a thing today about curb cuts. We've been here 12 years, so we were way behind. But let's see what else I want to go say here. Paving, a lot of people are complaining about paving, some of the council people tell me. We have a big paving project, we have all the streets listed. A few years ago, we paved some property streets, and a few months later, the former water board came in and had to repair a bunch of stuff, water and sewer. So now what we do is, we give them the list, because we don't want to have to go back in and pave it six months later when they go do repairs. So there's a lot of places that are patched, and the reason they're patched is because it is going to be paved, and we will get it fixed. But we try to get all the paving lined up where it's going, and we got a list of everything we're going to pave, how much it's going to cost. And, you know, we try to stay ahead of the game, let the water and sewer board, if they got any projects they need to do in there, when they get that finished, then we'll be paving. But it's not as easy as stuff looks sometime, and I want to congratulate Lisa Rosser in the Finance Department. I called her Doctor No, but she's really good. Even she says no most of the time when you go to her. That's why we got money in reserve. And we're above the, you're supposed to have, what, three months operating expenses? And we always are above that. Is that correct, Lisa? Yes. So, you know, we're doing everything we can. You can't fix everything for everybody all the time, but we're pecking away at it. And that's just some of the things I want to say.
Councilwoman Toz?
I'd just like to announce that on September the 29th, District One will have a community appreciation at the Alaco Tea Room at Downtown Civic Center, 5 to 8.
I see the gentleman that is going to replace me in November, first Monday, the first Tuesday.
Monday.
Monday. The first Monday in November. Mr. Kent Beck, stand up, Kent, let everybody see you. He won without a runoff. So he's quite a gentleman. I'm sure he's going to do you a good job.
Councilwoman Worthing?
Yes, I want to echo what Mr. Cole was saying about the entry level of the police and fire department. I understand we can't compete with a lot of these cities. I just left Las Vegas, and they pay their officers $41 an hour, starting now. So we can't compete, but we can give a raise to our entry level. We're not getting qualified people. You know, we just give, gave the test for the fire department. I think 10 people took the test. One might have passed it. When I became a police officer and took the test, we had 400 people taking the test. Now, we give the test every other month, and you may have 10 people. Less than that with the police department. We had an officer just put in his paperwork to retire, and we penalizing him because he's under 55 years old age. We penalizing him, he has to pay for his insurance. We as a city don't pay one red penny of his insurance. His insurance for a family coverage is 1,600 and some dollars a month. He's not going to get the 2,000, if that. And I'm just, that's wrong. And this council, we didn't pass that. This, this was passed several councils ago. It might have been the last council, the one before that. But we need to revisit that, because you're penalizing the person because they knew what they wanted to do right off the bat. They didn't change careers, and they came and they became a police officer, a fireman, and they worked their 25 years. You know, I don't want an officer out here at 60 years old. I don't want a fireman at 60 years old that have to continue to work. And we got, you got a lot of officers still working because they can't afford to pay that insurance. And, and it's just not, it's not right for someone to give their life, their, their whole life working for this city, and then we don't pay them a penny in retirement. And I understand we can't compete with all these big cities, I understand that. But we should be able to find money in the budget, and I've said this in the, in our little budget meeting, that you could give a raise to the entry level police and firemen. That's the only way we're going to get decent qualified applicants. And then a lot of y'all said that this, the insurance is not hurting us, but believe me, it is. And it's going to come a time when we're going to need, because we're about to lose, what, 10, 10 L officers? They about to retire, and some are leaving and quitting and going to other departments? Even if we have firemen that's quitting, and I never thought I'd see the day of a fireman leaving, because they would come and they would work the whole 25 or 30 years. But now we have a turnover in the fire department. We've always had a turnover in the police department. So that don't really concern me too much, but it is concerning me a little bit now. But in the fire department, I'm just saying, we need to look at it, and if we have to take a pay cut or something from some of these other departments, and the ones that's making 60, 80,000 dollars a year to give a raise to the entry level people so we can get qualified people, I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Councilman Bilanzi?
Well, I, I, I worked for the Self Service Board for a few years before I became a councilperson, and I know what, what the policemen and firemen are talking about, and, and I would venture to help or whatever I could do to get an entry level raised for these policemen. So I'm in favor of whatever we can do to do that, so. And that's all I have.
Councilman Brady?
So, I want to talk about the Patriot Parade. We've got a lot of, not rumors, but misinformation out there. We might not have a veterans parade this year. I just want to let everybody rest and ease. We will have a veterans parade, and we're taking applications for it now. Her name is Ashley, 256-467-442. That's the Gaston Edgewall Patriots Office. So anybody who's interested in that, let her know, okay?
What's the date?
I'm not real sure. Well, let's see, November is the same day as the luncheon, Gaston Edgewall Patriots. Seven days.
I think it's the same.
I'm thinking the seventh, too, yeah. We'll clarify that though later. Good, Eric, thank you.
Ooh, that's the Williams name. That's where we're going with these.
Yeah, y'all be gone. Lolly tells the part, don't worry about it.
Anything else, anybody else have anything?
No.
I'd just like to remind everybody that on Wall Street in Alabama City for the last, I'm thinking 35, 40 years, we had treats on Wall Street. I started working on, we started working on it last week. It's going to be October the 25th this year, it's on a Thursday night. It's going to start from 5:00 to 7:00. We'll have police protection down there, the roads will be blocked off, we'll have all kind of candy for the kids, hot dogs will be down there, everything will be free, you know, that the merchants give out down there. I don't know if there'll be any vendors or not this year selling, but we're going to plan on giving out like 1,100 hot dogs down there this year. So y'all make sure you come out, enjoy it, and it'll be a safe place. It's been going on, like I said, for 30 something years. Do we have anything else we need to talk about? I'm asked for adjournment, please.
Some move.
Deacon.
We adjourned.
No.